So, we will call it to order, call the meeting to order at 5:02. Kelly, thank you again.
I think next meeting I'll be officially passing the torch to Kelsey.
Okay. All right, Jill will be here momentarily, so we will get things started though. If we could get a motion to approve the consent agenda and the warrants.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes for the warrants? And I know we have the two minutes, one from our brief meeting, two warrant for the upcoming election, and then from the September, actually there's three minutes, so.
What was the 26th? Is that a committee meeting?
I think the 26th.
That's a Tuesday.
That might have been, I wonder what the 26th.
That was the Vermont School Board's meeting.
Oh, that's right, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, that one, right. Yeah, I submitted the minutes for that, so I should have remembered. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I guess we will go down to, we'll start with committee reports. Policy Council, Dave?
Yeah, we met and the, I didn't think to my parent report.
Okay.
And I just think, no, I made a different note before.
Okay.
It's my first meeting, so I'm just meeting people.
Perfect. Went well though? It went well?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Do they have, did they have a lot of new parents?
No, the parents are all from Westminster and none from Rappahoe.
Energy Committee, I don't think, have they met? No, I don't think there's been any type of energy committee. All right. Act 46, I know we have the upcoming vote in all of the towns, but we have not really met since the last meeting. I know we have a meeting next Monday, but nothing new in terms of the Act 46 to report.
The informational meeting is November 1st.
November 1st, yes. We are having informational meetings in all of the towns, so they are starting the 31st. So, we will, they will be in every single town. And then the Alternative Governance Subcommittee.
I missed that meeting.
Yep. And I know that, let me just try to find, there, I know that we're still trying to compile all of the information that they would need, so I know every, people were working, working on the different sources, getting from, let's see here, looking at how the PICUS report would, would affect every, all of the individual schools if we stayed as it was, and breaking it out into committees to see.
Work groups.
Yeah, the work groups, so, not committees, thank you. So hopefully, there's a meeting tomorrow night for that, so hopefully we'll be able to get a little more information for you on that.
I'd like to make a comment.
Actually, you were at that last meeting, so if you have anything, the alternative governance structure, you were at the last meeting, do you have anything to chime in?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't. But, we just received this memorandum from Rebecca Holcomb, and I thought it was interesting, it was nice to see a lot of these statistics and stuff, but what struck me is that this is where the thinking, this is how this whole thing with Act 46, or where this whole thing should have started. Before there was even an Act 46, was the state distributing information like this to the towns to share its perceptions, and then holding meetings all around the state to see how people accepted and reacted to those perceptions, and then went on from there. And I have a hunch if it had begun like this, instead of beginning with legislation, the outcome would be different, we wouldn't be exactly where we are right now. Period.
All right. Anybody, any additional comments on what Spoon was talking about? No. Hi Dad.
Hi.
Anything else on the alternative governance structure, the alternative government Subcommittee? Moving down to the finance, our last meeting was on the 4th, we are, and then we, we brought that information to the SU meeting, which was later. We are still discussing the total responsibilities of the finance committee, if it should be more of an executive type of committee, so that's, that will be something that will be still discussed at the, at the SU level, that would be something that all of the boards would decide on. I know that we are starting, we will be starting to get into all of the budgets here very shortly. I know we have a nice, nice list of all of our budget meetings for the finance committee as well as for every single board, so we will be getting into the nitty gritty of that here very shortly.
It seemed like at the SU meeting that they said we should take the question of whether or not the two committees should combine into one, that we can vote on them on the boards. Should we even vote on that today?
I think, well, I think we'd want to wait for Jill to get here, or something like that, and we can, we can come back to that. Figure we could hit all the committee reports until any type of major decisions, because she should be here hopefully very soon. But yes, we will definitely come back and we'll discuss that as, as the entire board, as to how everybody feels about that. And so down to, oh, here's Jill. We are down to finance, and we were talking, because at the last, at the last SU meeting, after the finance, we, Robin mentioned that we would take it back to the boards and see how everybody, how individual boards felt about the role of the finance committee, and if it should be more of an executive committee, or she can continue to have two different boards, or combine to one, so, we were waiting for you and you walked in, so.
So you want my opinion?
Well, we have not discussed, we wanted to wait for everybody, for you to get here first.
Opinion.
Do you want to start, Robin?
About the finance committee?
Yes.
It seemed to me, from the discussion in the SU meeting, that it would be a much more efficient way to do things, to have it be a single committee, but I'm not sure if there's any ethical issue about doing that.
It was standard procedure from some other places, right? Not that I guess that necessarily.
I didn't have that any issue in mind, I was just wondering if there was any reason why they were separated, or just sort of hadn't been in the executive committee for a while.
Well, we used to actually negotiate, I mean, the finance committee would sit down with the negotiating team from the school boards and negotiate, but I would think for probably six years or more, it's been much more concise, yeah. It's been, actually, there was a, maybe four years ago, there was a, not impasse, but we were kind of stuck through it. But, so in fact, eventually, I would have came in, the finance committee might be overwhelmed, but then they could.
Make a subcommittee or something.
Yeah.
So the idea now of the clarification committee, that it would be, finance would also be doing all the negotiating?
Right. Though, with the, it became the negotiating committee this year, we, the administration really covered up all of that, because that's what we directed them to do, so we really just looked at the final, the final outcome. We were not involved in any type of negotiations.
Because I thought we were just talking about the financial, the finance committee serving as kind of an executive committee for big picture decisions, so not negotiating. So the idea is now negotiating and more of an executive committee and officially finance committee?
Yes.
Yeah. That's why it came up, Robin, to be defined?
In other parts of the world, that's called Polit Bureau, where the finances and the politics, the policy decisions are all made, it's all in one, made by one body.
Well, it's never all made by them, though. They would make them.
Well, in between SU meetings.
But they make recommendations and bring it back to the SU boards.
Well, actually, I wasn't at the meeting, I don't know, was a, was a description of the, the role, or the, like a job description for the executive committee handed out? Is there a, do we know what we're voting on?
No, I felt like there were some examples given, and then the request to come back to the boards and, and get some more information. It's come up mainly, there are more issues because there are more employees under WSESU, there are more personnel issues that are coming up under WSESU, and we don't want to be calling all WSESU board members together every time we need to talk about that, so that, that's how the executive, sort of the executive piece came up, so that there would be a smaller board that meets regularly, that could hear that type of issue in addition to the finances. Other negotiations, and just from the boards that I've attended that have talked about this, negotiations comes up every three years, it would be something, or in the past, every three years, something that we could decide at that time, yes, we want that to be our negotiating committee, or no, we want a separate negotiating committee to do that. So that was, from other board meetings, that's been the one thing that's, people are like, that seems like more work than what many on the executive board might want to do.
The other thing, typically, an executive committee makes decisions between board meetings for things that come up, and I think, I mean, certainly before voting, you want to see something in writing about what, you know, what the authority is going to be and what is it.
Have they actually made decisions before?
What's that?
You've represented that they've made decisions, I'm trying to remember in my tenure, that they've made decisions.
There was something that just came up, right?
Correct.
That recently, a personnel issue that had to be acted on immediately, so I think that was what prompted the whole thing.
And there was, there's, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure if it's the same thing as the VSBA code of ethics, but there's a code of ethics that shows up in the, it's a while we just decided, the, the SU just voted to pay the VSBA, but the VSBA dues, there are seri, I can't remember all the things that come along, it's typically warrants and hiring superintendent, but if there weren't decisions, you know, if there weren't things, there are powers that supervisory unions have, and that's what, those are the decisions that get made. And it's a couple pages of powers of supervisory.
And it seems like we started a, a list, didn't we, Kim, of, of possible, that could maybe be a job description type.
I thought there was going to be something, Jill, I thought you would ask for that.
That's what I thought we were going to get, is something in writing, that this was the list of things that they would be doing. So I'm still not comfortable saying yes without knowing what it is they're doing.
And I'm not sure.
Okay, that's why, that is why I'm asking you, Dave, what you remember actually being voted on, because I don't remember this group ever voting, but.
No, we didn't.
No.
We vote, we didn't vote, we talked about, the, at the SU meeting, we decided to bring it back to the boards, I wasn't at that one.
No, I mean that, that in the past, this executive committee slash finance committee has ever voted on behalf of the supervisory union. So to me, it sounded like now it's morphed even further.
I wouldn't say that it's morphed, yeah, I feel like the charge that was given was for the finance committee members to come back here, talk about it again, because at the last meeting, sorry, the meeting previous to the October 4th meeting, that's when we started to come up with a specific list of what the job description would be. And so, bring it back, talk about it some more, and then when we have another meeting, which we'll be meeting regularly, but mostly we'll be focused on budgets, but at some point we'll come back to that job description and decide whether or not we're going to, what we're going to bring forth to each.
So for now, it's really, I mean, the finance committee obviously has finance stuff to do.
Exactly.
And, yes, you continue with the issues, so we really, there's no action.
No, I wouldn't think so.
So really, we're just looking for feedback, so I guess our feedback is, we want a list of things that they would do.
Like a job description.
A job description, before we can give any more feedback. But that was our, so I'm not giving new feedback, that's what I said six months ago.
Yeah?
More feedback.
More feedback, more of that. Spoon, did you have something too?
No.
Okay.
I have the right to remain silent.
You're going to take that, all right.
And if you don't, we need to miss you.
Diversity. All right, diversity.
So, the diversity committee, our main thing that we're discussing right now is about the diversity day celebration in May, and partnering with the town to create a much bigger, more robust event, and that was something that the town, they also said that they wanted to be involved in it, it was in Peter Elwell's list of recommendations that he came up with, so, he, he is going to come to our next committee meeting, and we were just generating some ideas about what we want to ask, what kind of support, and basically, money and shutting down Elliott Street were the things that we wanted to ask for. And then we also talked about some readings that we did over the summer about race and class, and sort of the history of those issues in the US.
Did you have any recommendations or anything for specific action out of?
Well, not at this point, I mean, I think that the, there wasn't something that came directly out of the readings, but those readings and the ones that we did last year and discussions, all informed the stuff that I'm going to be bringing up more in depth at the agenda item about the diversity discussion. And also, I think we skipped over in our, our agenda, the recognition of groups and visitors, but we have a bunch, and since we're all here, maybe it's good enough for that.
Thank you.
So before, yes, and then I want to check what else, did we check in, Dave, you had mentioned earlier today to check in on our work plan, have we done that yet?
No.
Okay. Okay, so just pull it up. So let's go with that, let's do recognition of groups and or individual visitors, starting over here.
Hi, I'm Summer Birch, a parent of a graduate of the school district and a second grader at Oak Grove School, and I'm here for the diversity part, I have a prepared statement, if I can get on the wifi.
I'm Ariel Nelson, also a parent, my kids are junior now, just coming also just here about the diversity and what's going to happen with that inside the district.
Hi, my name is Laura Howe, I'm a fourth grader at Academy, and I've always wanted to come to school for me, and so it's my first, but I'm specifically interested in the diversity piece as well.
My name is Marissa Nielsen, and I teach fourth grade at Vernon, I'm also part of the Diversity Equity Committee with Robin, and I'm here to participate in that discussion as well.
Okay, so, I do want to do diversity fairly soon, but I don't want to lose the work plan, just check in, and I want to make sure, just roughly, I know Kim wants to leave at a certain time, and I don't want to lose a quorum, does anybody else need to leave early?
Yeah, I'd like to hear the diversity as well, so.
So is there any action items that I don't know about, there's one that you've sent that we need to vote on?
Yes.
Is there anything else, pretty sure?
I have, I have something, Jill.
Okay. So.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay. So I'm not sure what to do next, to do, we have, one, how many prepared statements for the diversity?
I have one that a parent sent me, who couldn't be here to read, and then, if Summer wants to say hers, I don't know if anybody else had something they wanted to say or just respond.
I didn't print one out.
I didn't, I, sorry.
Can I have the wifi password so I can?
If you bring it over, someone will put you on.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
All right, am I going to you, Andy?
So it sounds like we can go forward with diversity and still come up. All right, Robin.
All right, so, should I read the comment that I had from a parent first, or just go into my own?
Whatever you want.
All right, I'll, I'll just start with my thoughts then, I guess. So, basically, my, this is, I think, combining a couple of the listed agenda items, but my feeling is that there's sort of a three-part approach that we could take to improving our diversity and equity in our schools, both in the classroom and in the workforce, and one part of it is with what we're teaching in the classes. And I had sent an article around about the ways that even great schools are failing to help people change their economic status, and so, I just wanted to come from that area of like, how reading and math are sort of the basics, one, you can't survive without those, so they're of course really important, but teaching those types of skills alone isn't helping kids, you know, lift themselves out of poverty, and because this isn't an individual problem, it's a, it's a systemic problem, and the only way to change that is if every member of our society is fully informed about what the system is that they're living in. So, I kind of see this adding racial justice, economic justice, and other social justice topics into our curriculum as a way to really support the critical thinking skills that we're already, you know, starting to teach, and that way, learning to kind of question our assumptions and why things are the way they are. But to be able to teach effectively about that stuff, teachers themselves need to be well-equipped on these topics, because it can be so, you know, fraught, and a lot of people feel uncomfortable talking about something that can get into some pretty, like, divisive discussions if they don't guide things the correct way. So, I wanted to request that we consider implementing two half-day trainings for teachers at the beginning of each school year on equity and diversity, and then also through those trainings, creating a structure where we're going to continue to follow up about these topics throughout the year, either in their staff meetings or through some other kind of mechanism that isn't, so it's not just something that we all get really ramped up about at the beginning of the year, and then sort of don't have a way to keep on doing that work, and some of the people that I talked to that do this kind of training suggested that some of the stuff that should be covered is gaining a common understanding of race, racism and white supremacy, questioning our assumptions on individual institutional and systemic levels, creating a mechanism for staff on how to interrupt and address microaggressions and bias as they come up, and in their work life and in their classrooms, and also setting goals for future learning, so that it's not, we did the thing, and now we all, you know, are done with that. And then, the third piece of it is the diversification of the staff, which right now is really not representative of our community as a town, and especially not of our community as a school, because the, I mentioned this at the other meeting where we talked about it, but the, the percentage of students of color in Rattleboro Town Schools is something around 25%, and that's much higher than the town overall, including all children and adults, which is, I think, around nine to 10% people of color, and then the number of staff members in the school is way below that. So, we're not representing our school community, or even our town community, the, and our staff, and I know that there's a lot of work being done about this on the town side right now, and there's a community collaborative, community equity collaborative that has David Dunne and, and Lively, I think, right? And then people from business, local businesses that are big employers and the town.
Do you have numbers, do you know?
Numbers of.
Like what, the percentage of kids, you said we're not representing?
It's about 25% I think overall for the school district, and I don't know a number of teachers, I only know, in this school, I think there's.
It's, yeah, you can add them up on the reports, but it comes out, but it's over.
For students, but not teachers.
Right, there, I don't know of any statistic on the teachers, but just by entering the schools, you can see that there's like one or two per school, including all staff, not just teachers.
And what about the town, you said it wasn't representative of the town, what's our, what do we have?
The town, I think the population of Rattleboro is between nine and 10% people of color.
And what's the definition of people of color now?
People who aren't white.
Non-Caucasian.
So anyone who's.
Asian.
So like my daughter that claims Latino heritage, she's non-white?
Right, right, so she would be counted in that nine to 10%, but you wouldn't be.
Good, definition is good to have.
There's also just, I mean, from looking at people that I know in the school community, there is a really large number of people who are parents, white parents of children of color too, so, that's another way that it's sort of part of people's families, even if they're not counted on the census as being a person of color, they might be part of a family of color, or a family with members who are people of color. So, the, that collaborative is already working on some good strategies for trying to recruit and retain people at jobs around the town. I think there's a different challenge in the school, because of the fact that we, as the schools, tend to recruit nationally, not just from the people that already live in Rattleboro, so there might be different strategies that we would need to do as schools versus how people are trying to address this in the town, or like the hospital and other businesses are in that collaborative, but I didn't know, like, for instance, is there a statement on job listings that says, like, teachers of color are strongly encouraged to apply and stuff like that, is that already in place?
Yeah, and those, I'm not sure that the district says, but the town's been significantly updated.
Okay.
The district does.
With an S U's.
Any advisement, it encourages people from diverse backgrounds to apply.
Okay, I think that on the committee, they're also kind of looking at more creative ways to really target specifically teachers of color, or people who are in school still, learning to be teachers, to, was it, there's something about recruiting at historically black colleges, David?
Yeah.
And, I don't have a lot, as much personal thoughts on that one, because it seems like there's so much work already being done on it by this other committee, so I'll let David or Lively speak to that part of it a little bit more, but I know that if we are also working on diversifying our curriculum and our training, that that's only going to help recruiting people when they see that this, the school communities of Rattleboro are really active and welcoming to people, kids and teachers on these issues. And I will also just read, while I'm talking on and on, I will read the other statement that I got from a parent, and then if you guys have anything to say, if you, Summer, you want to read yours, or anybody else has something to say?
Do you want me to read mine first?
Sure, yeah, why don't you go first since you're in person here?
Could you identify yourself, please? Hi, I'm Summer Birch, and I'm a parent of a second grader and a college student. So this is my written statement, because I'm not really good at doing this sort of thing on the fly. So while preparing for my remarks for tonight, I decided to see what was in the news in regards to affirmative action and racism, and what I found out just confirmed my suspicions that our country is moving toward an overwhelmingly nationalistic thinking, and there's been a lot of acts of racism in the news recently. Just to name a few things, I read, that I read, The New York Times reported in August that the Trump administration plans to look into suing universities over affirmative action policies that are seen as discriminating to white children. A Gallup poll showed that only 22% of white students support affirmative action policies. And another poll showed that 57% of. And another poll showed that fifty-seven percent of white students asked, um, believe that racism against white students was just as bad as racism against blacks or Latinos. So, think about that. So, our white students feel that they're being targeted in, in a racist way. So, that like, that feels horrible to me because I know that economically times are tough, um, working-class people are really having a really hard time, and we have a lot of working-class people in Vermont. But I don't think that, um, it's racism. I don't think it's reverse racism. I don't think that exists. So, um, anyway, so as a parent of two white children, I told you, a second grader and one in college, um, I'd like to read two definitions that I feel might be helpful in our conversation. Systemic racism and affirmative action. So, systemic racism, a system in which public policies, institutional practices, cultural representations, and other norms work in various, often reinforce, reinforcing ways to perpetuate racial groups' inequity. Uh, it define, it identifies dimensions, um, in our history and culture that have allowed privileges associated with whiteness and disadvantages associated with color to endure and adapt over time. Structural or systemic racism is not something that a few people or institutions, institutions choose to practice. Instead, it has been a feature of the social, economic, and political system in which we all exist. So, that's from the Aspen Institute, which is a nonpartisan think tank. Affirmative action, this comes from the Cornell Law School. So, a set of procedures...
Excuse me. If I may interrupt.
Sure.
I'm afraid I'm not listening.
Yeah.
Would you mind staying? I really can't hear.
Okay.
Affirmative action, a set of procedures designed to eliminate unlawful discrimination between applicants, remedy the results of such prior discrimination, and prevent the discrimination in, in future. Applicants may be seeking admission to an educational program or looking for professional employment. And then, from the actual executive order of nineteen sixty-five, in administering a program regarding which the recipient of a federal fronting program like a school has previously demonstrated, uh, sorry, previously discriminated against persons on the grounds of race, color, or national origin, the recipient must take affirmative action to overcome the effects of prior discrimination. So, um, just to sort of summarize, um, as a parent, I want to make sure that our community is doing everything we can to fight back against this current trend that I'm really worried about that's happening in our country right now. I see a lot of the protections that we've had for many different things being torn down by, uh, current politics. And I think it's really setting us up that if we don't take action or say anything to move forward, that even a liberal little town like Rattleboro could start to slip backwards and see some pretty negative things. And that's it. Thanks.
Is, is there anybody else who wants to comment right now?
I'll just make the comments, but can these take...
Um, I, I just wanted to say how beneficial it's been, um, as a teacher to have the opportunity to receive trainings, um, at grade-level meetings, but also, um, last year we read the implicit bias article that, um, the principals had read together and then passed on to the schools. Those small things allow teachers, um, and staff members to have the opportunity to sort of grapple with issues that not all of us might feel comfortable with, um, in a way that's, uh, useful, I think, to ourselves and to what comes out of our mouths every day with children. Um, because I think whatever we believe, um, will be instilled in our students in front of us every day, um, even if we're not thinking about it. Um, so, I just wanted to say how appreciative I have been of that. Um, and that, um, we're also, as wearing my diversity equity hat, um, we're also continuing to appreciate the support from the school board, um, principals, as well as the new, um, town select board and their support of our, um, of our issues as well. So, that was really all that I wanted to say. Um, and that it would be wonderful to continue having those and to have it more and more often, um, in any shape or form. So, thank you.
I'll read, um, a comment from another parent. Do you, uh, do you have something?
Yeah, I'm happy to go after as well.
No, go ahead. All the, the people who are in person.
Great. Um, my name is Anne Louise Wagner. I'm a resident here at Rattleboro. Um, and I, um, spend a lot of time working with a group called Lost River for Racial Justice. Um, we work with the Root Collective. Um, and I, um, am also here somewhat on behalf of Sheila Linton, who I, um, was just at a meeting with, with, um, our town manager, Peter Elwell, um, just like moments ago. And I apologize for being late and ironically missing a part of this conversation. Um, but what we were discussing there was, um, this piece that Robyn's been speaking to around how the local town government is committing to looking at equity and, um, the different ways that they can support people of color as well as a lot of other, um, targeted identities within this community. Uh, something that comes up a lot within that conversation is education and the support that, um, needs to take place here and the education and awareness that comes from the leaders, the teachers here, part of this community, um, who are teaching students. And so, I'm grateful that this topic is coming up and that people are committing the time in order to discuss this piece. Um, one component that is really relevant to this community right now, but is always important, um, is that, uh, continuing to think about, when we think about diversity and supporting people of color, um, and people in general, um, this component around supporting families who may be immigrants or are here as undocumented families, um, or documented children, and how we can continue to support that population specifically. Um, there was someone who was deported, um, recently from this community on Thursday. Um, and so, thinking about, um, his kids who are still here in this community, but how are they getting support, as well as how are there resources for, um, young students who potentially are fearful and making sure that they have the support from this group? Um, so, I encourage you to keep having these conversations. I'm sorry I haven't been able to be present until today, um, but I'm grateful to be here and continue to see how this unfolds. So, thank you.
I'm Ariel Nelson, um, parent, and I have a lot I could say. I'm going to try and keep it really short and succinct. Um, I think it's really important that these conversations get started in our schools and with our children at a very young age. One of the, I, I'm born and raised in Vermont, in central Vermont, down here now, but one of the things that I think we get, we forget about in our liberal bubble of the state of Vermont, and I've heard the words of like, oh, but we're so good here. And we start to lose sight of the biases that exist and that we all embody. It's impossible to grow up in our society and not have bias. It's impossible. So, I think it's really important that we get this conversation going at a very young age so that we get, that it, so it goes throughout the community. And so, yes, training the teachers, but also thinking about how do we bring this into the curriculum, you know? So, it's not just a diversity day, like, oh, let's look at our differences. But when we, when we use literature from all different types of authors and we use, you know, every, we just bring in a multicultural, I mean, ideally, a multicultural curriculum is what we should be doing as educators. So, I'm an educator as well, um, because we are, we are creating citizens for, for the world, for our country. And really, to have an understanding and to be rich citizens, we need to have a multicultural understanding of the world and different perspectives of life and other people's lives. So, I'll stop there, but thank you.
Laura, did you have any remarks you wanted to make at this time?
I know, but I agree with everyone on that.
The, the other parent that had contacted me about it was, um, talking about some of the things that's been going on at her school, supporting diversity. This is from Jessica Bashford, who's an Oak Grove parent and, um, is also the head of the PTO. Dear members of the school board, thank you for creating the opportunity to discuss the issue of inclusion and diversity in our elementary schools this evening. I apologize I could not be there in person. I want to begin by recognizing and showing my appreciation for all past and ongoing efforts by the school board and elementary school faculty and staff in this regard. More specifically, I want to recognize the successes I've experienced firsthand at my daughter's elementary school, Oak Grove. These include supporting new parent-led conversations last year around inclusion, social justice, and diversity, school support for publicly and visibly recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day at a recent school-wide assembly, and Oak Grove's participation this fall in the Vermont Reads Initiative for twenty seventeen, reading a highly moving memoir by distinguished black author Jacqueline Woodson. Additionally, last spring, Oak Grove School was recognized by Teaching Tolerance, a project of the Southern Poverty Law Center for being a model mix-it-up school. According to the Teaching Tolerance website, "Mix it up" models schools embrace respect and inclusiveness as core values. They mix it up all year long. I want to vocalize my gratitude for achievements and successes such as those mentioned previously and lend my continued support for this board's focus on the issues of inclusion and diversity in our schools. Thank you for the efforts you're able to pursue in support of the school, namely helping our children meaningfully engage with the histories, perspectives, ideas, and lived realities of people from wide-ranging backgrounds, particularly those from non-dominant roots. Meaningful exposure to and engagement with these histories and realities must lie at the heart of a curriculum aimed at raising empathetic and well-informed members of society. Thank you so much for your support. Sincerely, Jessica Bashford.
I'm wondering if we could hear from you, Lila, about the curriculum?
Sure.
And what is already involved? Or what your thoughts are about changes?
And then also what type of training is already done?
So, saying this, obviously, there's always more that we can do and different ways to look at things. Um, for the past, uh, I don't know, three to four years, we've had the Diversity Equity Coordinator, um, every set of grade-level meetings coming and doing some work, um, everything from race to poverty to, um, bringing in a variety of books and reviewing those books with teachers, looking at them, looking at our curriculum to see what it is that we need to be a little more heads up about, um, things that we can change in the classroom. So, that's ongoing and will continue. We started last year at the leadership level, looking at implicit bias. Last year, um, my work with Jamie Card, a counselor in Vernon, um, looking at articles for the leadership team to read and do a proto, do some protocols with, and then bring those back to each of the faculties. And I think Marisa, um, spoke of that. Uh, this year with Julianne Egan and her position, we've continued that, and Julianne has led us through a protocol around an article this year, again, with the intention that when we're comfortable as leaders, then we can bring it to our staff and do, um, do some work at the staff level so that we're always trying to keep it on our agendas. We have a director of ELL, English Language Learners. She reached out in the spring last year to every single ELL family in our community, hoping to be able to, them to be comfortable to go to her if they were starting to feel nervous about what was happening nationally. And, um, she's always willing, um, and we might, I might want to make sure you have her name, um, as a contact person because she's always willing to work with any of our, our families that are, um, English Language Learners. Um, the English Language Learner teacher here at Academy, um, does an amazing job, um, bringing in families, inviting families. Um, she's worked with our diversity coordinator in the past to ensure that we're having activities here at the school so that people are feeling included and the fact that we can learn about each other's cultures and heritage that way. So, those are some of the things that we have done and continue to do.
Curriculum-specific?
Curriculum-specific, um, other than looking specifically at our curriculum materials or are you thinking more about...
Well, I guess I'm looking like against a checklist that, you know, that some of the stuff you were talking about and the research you've done suggests we do this, this, and this. I wonder how much of that we already are aware of and doing. I mean, I, I know from watching my kids bringing stuff home and listening to interviewing teachers over the years and such, that it's been, for example, the music teacher interviews we did two years ago, that was one of the things they were talking about, and how she was bringing in from different diverse backgrounds of music and not just, and then she was playing off of that with, um, specific programs with the English or the social studies and whatever. So, I, I know there's at least some of this going on, but I didn't know from a standpoint of all of our district here.
Do any of you want to add anything about curriculum or what you're doing specifically?
I just think every teacher brings their own experience to the classroom. And, for example, we have a sixth-grade teacher who, what was she in? Peace Corps? Um, so she's traveled, we've had so many teachers come through that have traveled to so many different places and worked with several different, um, areas of kids, and they speak many languages, so incorporating that. Uh, we know one of our third-grade teachers right now is using Spanish daily and she is fluent, so, you know, it's just different ways to weave it in, um, throughout our existing curriculum. It's not that we want to promote another curriculum on top of what we have to already do. It's more weaving it into everything we do already.
And, and just to respond also to interviewing, because that has been hard, hard for us when you're using a national search engine. Um, we, we look at candidates from around the country. We set up Skype interviews so that we're not, um, thinking that people have to travel here for their inter, for their first interview at least, so that we're trying to break down barriers so that we can, um, think of other ways to interview and get a broader, um, broader candidate pool. And always, our, our interview questions have questions about diversity and how, how you integrate diversity and how you bring in other, um, ideas into the classroom, so...
Can we, can we, I'm sorry, go ahead, Summer.
Oh, I have a question for Jerry.
I know that you do, that there's the Teaching Tolerance, um, that you subscribe to, the magazines. Is that incorporated into the curriculum at Oak Grove in any standardized way or is that something that Catherine Mason sort of uses?
I think it's some of the work that Catherine does in the classroom. Um, and we share, we share materials, uh, with the teachers and so it's kind of like what, um, Kelly was saying, that it can be, um, some teachers in their social studies could get into using some of those materials more so than, than others.
But it's not, so the Teaching Tolerance isn't part of the curriculum? It's sort of in addition to when, when a teacher's...
Yeah, because, because it's not a curriculum that, that we're using, but, um, some of the work that we're doing with, um, our morning meetings, um, she, we bring a lot of that into the, actually even with the middle school leadership model that happens in the summer and throughout, and then that we continue with our, uh, school leadership teams throughout, um, all three town schools. There's a lot, there's a large component of, of diversity, equity, um, harassment training, if you will, of that, um, and social justice, I should say rather than harassment training, but, you know, uh, with, with the students. And then we use those students oftentimes to teach other students. They, they become like the trainers of, of trainers.
Just a question, um, if it was specifically used or just sort of as a guide, that's all?
It's really more of a, more of a, a guide. There's, there's good articles that we will, um, share, um, some of the videos, um...
Is that something that all of the elementary schools all kind of get that material or is it you and Catherine Mason specifically are interested in it so Oak Grove gets, gets it?
We use those materials as well.
Okay.
Yeah, our school counselor does it in small groups as well as whole class discussions, co-teaching with the classroom teacher as well. We also have an active restorative justice team, um, that our, um, school counselor runs with our sixth-grade teacher. And actually, we actually do quite a bit of collaboration with Oak Grove School around that piece. There's a formal training for those students in the beginning of the year, and then they become, um, active student leaders throughout the school year. So, it's like an upper elementary program, fifth and sixth grade. I just wanted to say something about recruitment and hiring. So, we do use a, a national search online called School Spring.
So, we do use a national search online called School Spring, and the district pays, and then you'll fee, and I don't know what that is, but it's not cheap. From there, you can branch out and select other publications that will, like, there's one that I've used in the past for, it's a recruitment tool for African-Americans. I can't remember the name, but, but I will tell you that it's very expensive. It's talking about $2,000 an ad, and I've never gotten an interview from it. So, it gets complicated when we're looking at all these topics, because they all have, they all have, may even have dollars, additional dollars of funding. Testing, like recruitment is a huge issue. In law schools in the Northeast, particularly in Vermont right now, for teachers or administrators, we have very small applicant pools, period. And we also have very tight budgets, so if we increased, or in Bradtown, for example, our advertising budget to advertise in other publications, we could easily spend another $25,000 doing that, so. But that's something that, you know, we'd have to commit, say, okay, we're going to, we're that committed, we're going to spend additional $25,000 to do this.
I think anything that we are gonna suggest and/or like vote on that we're making this change, we would have to allocate funds to support that, not just be like, do this more work, people, you know? It would be going hand-in-hand with a funding thing, and that's, I think, when there's a specific decision or proposal around something like that, that we can research what are the costs and then vote on funding it or not funding it, if that's, you know, how it goes, but.
I also wanted to talk a little bit about the Diverse Workforce Group. I think you've sat in before, David.
Yeah.
Peter Elwell and I have met and we've talked, and we recognize it cannot be separate initiatives, that we need to work together, because if we want to attract people to this community, it has to be more than just a teaching job. There has to be housing, there have to be lots of other things that are going to keep the people here in our community. And so, Peter and I are talking about going out on some recruitment trips together as a town and a school district. In the past, before I was in this position, the police department went with the school system to Springfield, Mass. to do some recruiting. So, there have been some efforts. I would not say that they've been successful at all, but we're going to continue to work on it.
I think the other thing about the Diverse Workforce Committee is that it's not just the school, the town doesn't hire many people in a year. The school district does, but it's also the retreat, the hospital, most of the large employers, and there'll be smaller employers, and I think there's an awareness that it's not just a job that brings people here, there has to be a welcoming community. And one of the ways that I think that that group is going to wind up projecting it is that here's this community with all these employers, all these opportunities, all these different levels of jobs and training programs and opportunities for people, that's really, we want diverse people, we want to recognize the value of diversity, and we want to make it part of our lives, and we actively work toward it. Because you have to give people, even, most people, probably, I think they would look at Brattleboro and say, well, maybe I'll go for the interview, but I'm not gonna stay there, and who knows what's gonna happen in the interview? Because a lot of us aren't really conscious of the implicit or the unconscious bias that's around. So, it's a really complex issue, but I think that the approach of the whole community and working together is going to defray some of those costs. Because I, one of the things that came up at the last meeting, not just the historically Black colleges and universities, but also places like UMass Ambrose or SUNY Albany that have large, you know, have very well-integrated staff and student body, and to just, to work with those, with the placement offices in those institutions, not anywhere else that we can come up with placement offices, to just, for them to know that here's this town that's really looking, really is welcoming and is building, you know, dozen schools, the community is dedicated to, and it's really a good place to come and live your life and, you know, and build your career. And so, I think, you know, long-term, I think that it's a really good start, it's a really good direction, and it's really conscious of the needs, the need for it to be community-wide. I think in the short term and immediately, there's a great deal of work that needs to be done, and obviously, a lot has happened, but I'm gonna wait and hear what other people have for suggestions. But I, from having spent one day at a gender, creating gender-affirming environments workshop, I thought I was fairly up to speed, and I thought I really understood things, and I was astonished at how much I didn't understand, and the level and the depth and the subtlety and sophistication of gender identity and the experiences that people have, and the way people are treated, that I just, you just don't run into it in your day-to-day life. You really have to, people have to help you, and they have to guide you with that. And I think that, I mean, I'm glad to hear that the administrative team has been doing, has been looking into implicit bias. I'm sure there's more beyond that, but we, I think, as a board, should be the place to start.
Well, that was something that was decided a while back, I think, right? What's the status on that training for the board?
For the gender?
No, the diversity implicit bias training. Didn't we make that goal, we were gonna do implicit bias training for our board?
Lyle, you had training dates for the gender, but what about implicit bias?
I do not have that, I didn't know that I was supposed to find. I looked around for people and had two names given to me.
Yeah, I think Michaela had some ideas. This was like, now I'm thinking, it was on an email chain, not at a meeting, that we discussed it.
Okay, so, the two, yeah, I would take Spoon first.
What Dave was talking about is a good introduction or a segue into what I've been wanting to say, and it's sort of three parts to it. One is, from the time I was a kid, actually thirteen, it was an event in my life, and it sort of propelled me into becoming somewhat of an activist, radical, for the rest of my life. And, and I thought, being involved in all of these activities that one would find, a person like me, throughout their life, I had a pretty good notion of racism and that sort of stuff. The summer before last, I happened to end up, not accidentally, in New Orleans with an old friend who has spent her life devoted to helping people understand these issues. And by the time I left, I had discovered for the first time at age 69, I understood something about white privilege, and I understood a lot about slavery, which all the years of education I had never gave me a clue about what I learned at that point. And so, with that, that's the first part. So, the second part begins to, I started thinking about, how can we teach this stuff unless our teachers really understand and believe in what they are doing? And it's, I'm not quite so, I can't think of the word offhand, but it's not so easy to think that because someone is a credential teacher, you can hand them an idea and say, "Teach this," and they will successfully do so. Because I think believing in what you do has a lot to do with how it comes across and how well the students learn. And so, I'm, part of all this, I have a very great concern about teacher education as well as the student education. Along with that, one thing that I talk about all the time with lots of different things is how do we plan, or are we working on different ways in which we measure our success and our progress, maybe the same things being redundant, in this area? And I don't know, I mean, there are, of course, reports all the time, police reports and things, when things go wrong, you hear about it, and you can add up the number of times that you hear about something. But I don't know if those are all the measurements, if those are the right measurements, but somehow I'd like to feel assured that when we begin to do something, we're able to measure our progress.
Well, that's kind of what I was hoping would come from the increased amount of teacher training on these subjects, because, as you said, you can't just tell someone, if they don't have a deep comfort with this subject matter, to be like, "Teach this to the kids." And so, having, you know, from talking to both outside trainers and people working on this stuff in the school district, it seems like the stuff that they have right now of having Michaela come to the grade-level meetings is so helpful, but really not enough time to give the teachers the breadth of understanding that they need to be able to fully address this in their own selves and in their classroom. And the trainings also include goal-setting, so that's a way that you can measure progress by saying, by examining what's going on, we've thought of this goal for ourselves, and then having a structure where later on, there's check-ins and accountability for that, did we meet the goal, or how are we doing it, getting towards the goal? And those goals, I think, are something that's gonna be individual to the schools and maybe to the grade levels, but one possibility could be doing this kind of training as an entire district, and having all the staff be coming. I don't know the details of how their current training works, but if it was possible to have everyone come on the same two days, maybe like a month apart or something, and receive this training together, that'd also be like time-saving and cost-saving, if we're just paying the trainers to do it on these two days, and giving people a lot more, you know, they break out into groups, they formulate these goals, and look at what they, changes they think they might want to make in their own class, or stuff that they might want to bring into their curriculum. And it is, you know, some of it is exactly what Kelly was saying about weaving this into the stuff that they're already teaching, thinking about, you know, what books they're selecting when they're doing a reading group. That's something that they have to teach anyway, why shouldn't it be a book where the protagonist isn't a white kid? And it's not a book about like, let's learn about slavery, it's just like, let's have multicultural protagonists and stuff like that. And then, also, I'm hoping that we could have explicit content of social justice topics in the classrooms.
Just one sec, one second. Yes, I want to take you because we haven't heard from you yet, but I'm just looking at a clock, and I think this is the type of discussion that could go on for a very long time. So, I'm thinking maybe we'll take one or two more comments, and then try to wrap up with some specific actions that we want to look at, and maybe one of the actions might be, we come back to this topic if we don't feel like we're ready for it, but, and then move on to the rest of the agenda for tonight, unless there's people with burning desires for more commentary, but go ahead.
I just have a brief add-on.
We need to have your name and where you're from.
Oh, sorry. My name and?
Where you're from, sorry.
My name is Abby Healy, I'm from Brattleboro. I just wanted to add on, as a potential cost-saving, if there's a goal to increase training around this for teachers, to invite in private school teachers as a buy-in, private schools, it would be cheaper for them to buy in.
To join the training?
I'm sorry?
To join the training?
Yeah, and then it would be cheaper for them to buy into a training that the school district is already providing than to provide their own, but it would also help save the school district money, just to, you know, if cost is a factor in providing these kinds of training, which I'm sure is, that would be a way to support it.
Any other thoughts from anybody right now?
I just have one suggestion. So, I'm an instructor for River Valley Community College, and I teach nurses up at Dartmouth College, or Dartmouth Hospital, and so what Dartmouth does is they've got this program called Grow It. They know that they have a recruiting problem, they can't fill all the vacancies that they have, so they partner with a local community college to add incentives to the people who already live in the community to fill positions. And so, maybe we could look at, you know, speak with a place like Dartmouth and what their partnerships look like, and see if that's something that would be helpful to, in recrution or in recruitment for filling positions.
Let me grab this one, and then Spoon.
Another practical idea for, not necessarily increasing diversity of staff, which I understand is a huge issue and has been attempted a lot and isn't working, but I am personally interested in seeing a recruitment of parents of color for PTO. I think it's kind of an issue that, I don't know about all the schools, but as I understand it, definitely at Green Street School, and potentially at the other, at least, elementary schools, the PTOs are run by white parents. I think this is, you know, creates a negative atmosphere, particularly for children of color, that the school is staffed completely by, and the community of the school is run completely by white role models, which I think is really detrimental to our students of color and also our white students. But I think that that, you know, if we can't bring in staff that represents the racial diversity of our students, then we should be like really figuring out ways to empower parents who are not white to be stepping into positions of, it's not authority, but...
Leadership.
Leadership in the community of the school. If there's a way that we can think about doing that, I think that would be really helpful.
Spoon?
A very interesting aspect in this conversation is, of course, how we fund activities like this, and it's certainly legitimate, but my lifetime experience is that, is recognizing how difficult it is to find funding for things that we're reluctant to do. I mean, we, how much do we spend to send six teachers out to Arizona for some conference?
I don't think we've ever sent.
And, well, but you start looking at where we do spend money, or some programs that we buy, or this, or the other thing, and expenses of 10 or 15, 20, $30,000 don't seem, doesn't seem like much in light of a $30 million school budget, or, well, 18 million for the elementary?
Fifteen.
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 Fifteen. And, but, it's to have a workshop here, like a weekend workshop, that might cost 12 or $15,000, but that you can get 30 teachers or other people into it. That doesn't seem like much for what you're hoping to get. And it just, so I just want to make the point that everywhere on the municipal level, it's always hard to spend money for things that you don't really want to do.
I don't know why I didn't think to do this, but I can easily get quotes of how much this would cost, so that we know what numbers we're talking about here.
I wonder, do we know potential for any grants out there that we could, that we could look at? Because I'm sure that there, there are grants, you know, that we could look at for implicit bias and things like that.
The Select Board and the town administration and all the town employees, starting Monday, are gonna be, are going through diversity, equity training. I'm not sure of the details of who's doing it, but I'll get, I can bring that the next time.
I'd like to hear too, what they have already planned. Is their training already planned?
There's not training planned. I have reached out to people around, Mary Gannon is one person, Dottie, whose last name is escaping me, from Keene State College is another person, though she's very, very busy. So, there are people in our area that have done trainings.
So, the professional development for this year is already planned?
Wait, I'll talk about the teachers.
Well, we don't really, I think that's what we kind of want to sort out.
I know, I thought we were talking about all these different things in general. So, I, I mean, when I was listening to Spoon, I thought we were talking about teachers specifically.
When you just asked Jerry, I mean, when you just asked Lyle, what is planned, were you asking about for us or the teachers?
I'm asking about the teachers. Sorry. So, I'm wondering, the professional development for the t- So I'm, I'm wondering the professional development for the teachers for this year, is it, it's already planned out? And does it include anything on diversity already?
At the grade level meetings, yes, yep. And I just, can I offer just another contextual lens? As people are talking, I was thinking about our grade level meeting today, Kelsey was there, and three big topics today were proficiency-based educational systems, so the topic of Act Seventy-Seven essentially, family engagement and assessing bias in texts, and also talking about issues of race and other, other issues at young grades. And so those were, those were three big topics today. And it just is interesting to me, I think, with this shift that Act Seventy-Seven is promoting around flexible pathways and personalized learning, there's really a shift in how we're thinking about learning and both for students and adults in the system. And so some of this work around where do we want our students to be as global citizens when they leave us and maybe come back and become teachers? What are we doing, you know, vertically, all, you know, across the grades to get there? So the timing of this is, it, well, it's timely because there's this big shift and right now, you know, it's the class of 2020, that's our first class, that is graduating with a proficiency-based diploma, and that has huge implications for us planning forward for our whole pre-K to 12 system. So it's just another way to be thinking about how this work weaves into like the work we do every day all year. So just another framework for it.
I think, I think in a sense what, what we're saying is to turn that around, is how to work all the work that you do every year into this, that this is really something that's crucial and really important at this point, and given the growing demographics of our student body and our responsibility to, you know, to get them ready for whatever they, they see, I think it's something that really needs to become a really primary focus. But anyway, that's, we'll, we'll talk about that. Just a couple of things about resources we have, I think, obviously, you fill them right up, we have eight in-service days, or maybe nine, when teacher professional development can happen that are already paid for, there may be costs for trainers or materials, but the staff are there, the time is paid. And we also have a one percent fund, which the school board can also apply to use, that is available for doing work outside of the typical or beyond, or to enrich the initial curriculum. So we could conceive, either negotiate with the association or just on our own, use part of those funds to support this kind of work. So there are places where we can, where there are resources that we could get. I think it's a question of what's going to become a priority. And I think that's what we need to be talking about, what, how much of a priority is it for us? And it's really great to have people from the community here because we're supposed to be representing the values of the community and making sure that they are reflected in the schools. And sometimes trying to figure that out on your own is difficult. Sometimes you think you got to figure it out and then people come and explain to you and you didn't, and that's even harder. But I guess my point is that if we, if we can continue to engage people and continue to get good ideas and come up with a strategy for making these kinds of changes. And as I said before, I think starting with core training would be the, would be the place I would suggest that we start, so that we have some sense of what we're talking about.
So that's a great segue because we're at sixteen, fifteen, sixteen. So I'd like to know from the board at this point if we all have specific areas that we want to move forward in, is there a specific action that we want to try to take out of this discussion?
Well, I don't know if people feel ready to vote on this today, and probably not because there's many dollar numbers attached to it, but the specific action that I'm hoping to move forward eventually is to at, at least add this increased amount of training. And do, do you guys have any suggestion of like what would be an appropriate first step?
So training for whom?
For the teachers. I, I definitely think we should do an implicit bias training as a board, and it seems like everyone is probably in agreement on that.
We agree.
I thought we already did agree on that, right?
Yes, yeah, we agreed on it at our goal-setting meeting, I think, but we just haven't scheduled it yet.
Robin, when you say teachers, does that include the principals?
I think that it should include all staff, so administrators, teachers, and parents. And I don't know if there's any other people in the school who can be compelled to go to trainings, or if that would be necessary, but any, everyone who interacts with, you know, students in a teacherly or an authority-ish way, it seems like should be included in that.
So let me ask, do we already have that scheduled in the professional development?
In grade level meetings, yes.
I know about the grade level meetings, I'm talking about an increased level beyond the two hours that they get at the grade level meetings.
So they get two hours per year?
Is it two hours once a year or twice a year?
Twice a year.
So four hours a year?
It depends, plus faculty meeting, I mean, you know.
But, but just, just let us say that four hours a year, just specifically for diversity, equity, for training?
At grade level meetings. That doesn't include any staff meeting trainings or anything?
Right, so what I'm hoping, and I don't think that this, there is a mandated structure that this happens outside of those grade level meetings, it's kind of up to the, whoever is composing the agendas of the staff meetings when and how the, this topic gets brought up at, at other points throughout the school year. And I know that some teachers choose to go and do further training on it too, but that's why I think that this would be best as like a school district-wide thing, because right now it seems, through my perception just as a parent in the school, to be really uneven that teachers who have an interest in this pursue it, learn a lot about it, put it in their classrooms, and some people, that's not their passion and they don't really touch on it too much. So I'd like to see us level the playing field for all teachers and thus all kids in the classes.
Can I make a, actually, three suggestions of things that, that we talked about?
Well, let me see, Robin, did you have anything else?
That, I mean, I am open to suggestions of what you guys think are appropriate next steps to move towards that eventual goal of asking for increased training.
So you had some ideas of who to talk to to get numbers, was that what you said?
Yeah.
So it feels to me, I don't know what the rest of you are thinking, but maybe that would be a good first step before we make any commitments or, or thoughts on that further? And I think at the same time too, I always feel like when we're asking for anything that we should know from the administration side, what's already being done, how much time, I think we've kind of answered that, but what's the total block of time available? I mean, it's not unlimited.
It sounds like you're talking about something that would best be conducted over like a, along a block of time, like a, like a full day in service.
Or like, it could be a one half-day in August or whenever they have the beginning of the year one, and then like a month later, or however many weeks it is until the next in-service day, another half-day training, when some time has passed to kind of let people start incorporating that first training. That, that was the structure that was suggested to me by people who do these trainings, that they said two half-days, not like in direct succession.
Right, so if you're talking, so looking at the, the mechanism of a, the mechanics of that, then there's, there's generally three days before the students come, the teachers are expected to be here, employees are expected to be here. By contract, only fifty percent of the time can we ask teachers to not be in their classrooms? Okay, so that's a day and a half. However, there has, you know, there typically is first, beginning of the year faculty meeting, the types of things that people need to get in their, in their hands, so it comes down to a day. So August is one day, then the next, in terms of the schedule, it's August, then there's two days in November, Thanksgiving week, Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week, then the next.
One day in January.
Is January. And then, then the other days are devoted to parent-teacher conference days or things of that nature, I believe. And then there's a day or two at the end of the school year after the kids leave, okay? And generally, those are, those are devoted to teachers, end-of-year meetings, teachers taking down their things out of classrooms, you know, packing up the classroom, that kind of thing. That's the schedule.
Do you still do the, the professional learning committee after, committees after-school groups? I remember used to, I remember coming to one at one point when they were looking at student work and doing exit cards and stuff like that, it was new teachers and a teacher leader. Is that after-school time still used for that sometimes?
Yeah.
Because depending on the model, that might be the follow-up method.
That's the one I would.
Yeah.
But I, I would say is that, looking at it from a teaching and learning perspective, that this type of thing, that this type of content doesn't work well on one model, one hour, one hour, one hour.
Yeah, I think that's why they suggested a longer period.
But, but more half-days are more challenging the schedule.
Right.
But I can tell you this though, and I'll, I'll shut up because I know you want to say something, Spoon, but we, we already, already booking into next, next year, we are at Academy School for Math Development for the, the two days in November and quite possibly January. So we have to book that far in advance to get, to get what we're, what we're trying to accomplish presently.
And Spoon, one, add up your questions directly to Andy?
Yes.
Okay.
From the way you're talking, Andy, I'm taking that to have teachers here any more than the days they've been scheduled for at the beginning of the year is a union issue.
Well, no, it's a contractual matter because we have a contract.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
So, so if we wanted, because I think we're talking about something of a seriousness at a magnitude of, of perhaps having a few additional days that teachers would work for the purpose of some kind, this kind of training.
I wasn't thinking to add additional days, I think that getting into renegotiating their contracts is going to be something that is just way beyond the amount of like support that we can generate for this issue. And so I was hoping that it could be done within the structure that already exists for teachers to receive trainings. And I know that there's a lot of emphasis on math and reading because those are like survival skills basically, but I was hoping that room could be made for this, which I think is also kind of like survival of us as a society, a crucial issue as well.
I wasn't saying we couldn't, but I was just trying to throw that out there cautiously.
Sure, I mean, I'm glad you said that because I wasn't really sure what is the exact timing of like how many of these chunks are available throughout the year and stuff like that.
Well, I was trying to give you the scheduling and just make, make aware that how far out we plan for those things, so if we're going to do something like this, we, we'd have to know pretty quickly.
Right.
Because once, we enter into contracts with, with folks.
And so, do you use your head about the contracts of people that you hire to come and do trainings, future?
Right, yeah.
And the other thing we'll have to be careful about is a training for seven hundred employees in a room for half a day is not at all what we would be wanting to have, no, that would be not good. So we would have to be able to have a trainer that came in a few times and take groups of teachers, possibly, as Andy was saying, possibly one group of principals and teachers do their meetings at a certain time and while others are doing some training and flick-flopping, so we, we'd need to have some time to schedule. But it does mean a trainer would have to be here multiple times to be able to get everyone in a small enough group.
And when you were talking, Robin, district-wide, you mean where the district is our three schools?
Yeah.
Is that what all your meaning?
Yes.
Because when you were just saying the seven hundred, you were thinking.
No, I didn't mean the supervised reunion. Is that where the seven hundred number came from?
Yeah, we rarely do anything for just one district. If it's good for one district, why isn't it good for all the districts?
Well, we only have control over this district, we can't tell WSESU to do a training.
Well, yes we can.
I mean, that's a different meeting.
I don't understand.
I'm just trying to talk about this meeting here.
Well, but that is, that brings up a question too, because I think we look at the resources and the training and how, but at, at the time I've been on the board, we've never given such a strong direction as to anything about professional development. That's typically been left up to administrators to decide and to think about. And so to me, if we feel strongly enough of this as a board, perhaps it is something that we bring to the SU and talk about at the SU level and say, you know, this is something we're considering and we were wondering what other folks might think about. I mean, that would be something for you to opine on, Lyle, whether it makes sense.
Well, it's a great idea, I just wouldn't want that to be determinative whether it happens or not. We can function on our own.
Like the indigenous people's state thing?
Exactly, but it also would be more financially, if Lyle was looking into it or even, you know, your research into it and it shows that it's financially advantageous, why not?
Right, but I think it would be adding a considerable amount of time to the training to add the, all of the employees of the SU. So I, I think, I'm not sure that that would be a savings exactly.
I'm not thinking of it in savings, I'm thinking of it in what's best for teachers.
Right, no, I'm with you on that totally, I just meant as far as like the cost savings thing, I'm not sure that that would be.
And, and if you, if you're looking at doing the whole SU, you get, you know, you have the employees that are based out of, you know, that are more SU-based and not the school, you know, school employees, but they still come in contact with the kids, you know, you have all of this, the special ed teachers, so if we can incor, incorporate them as well, that would be, that would be good.
I mean, to be honest about my intentions, I was hoping that we would just decide to do this as Brattleboro Town Schools, and then the SU would be like, hmm, that looks good, we should also do that.
I'd suggest that we explore it that way, that you go ahead and find, you're going to look into numbers and models for, for doing it, and that we explore it for our purposes. And if it wants to expand to other places, that's fine, but it really, we're the ones that.
So I'd like it as a motion, let's do that as officially as.
Well, I'll, I'll do one in a minute, but we, we have, we're the ones that have the twenty, twenty-five percent children of color. But the, the three things that, well, before I make a motion, I just want to see if people agree that these are three things that we sort of are doing. One is to, for Robin to look into how we might do the teacher education and so the numbers. The second was implicit bias training for the board, and I'm not sure if it agreed to which the administrators have had it, but it might be useful to include that as well. And I'd like to talk to Peter Elwell on Monday when we start our training and get a sense of how they organize that, who they use and what the model is, because they're doing a hundred and, well, probably close to two hundred people, the entire staff plus the board and the administration, so it's very similar size.
How long is that training for them?
Four days. But there's, it's not one person, it's broken into eight groups and it's half-day training for eight groups over four days.
I was just thinking, maybe we should pay, go in with that, that'd be cheaper.
Why don't we just go there?
Exactly, that's what I mean, it'd be cheaper.
Clash day training.
Yeah, that was the, that's the second one. And the third one is to ask the principals to actively recruit parents of color for their PTOs, and just as an immediate step forward. And I imagine you'll get some feedback and some, some ideas and, and then talk as you do and, and, you know, come up with a pretty good strategy.
I just want to comment that we, I think principals probably already are actively recruiting all parents, and it's not like, at least in my time in academy, it wasn't like we had people knocking down the doors to become.
It is hard to get people to be honest, but I think that Abby's point was a really good one, that if there's something that seems to be a group of a bunch of white ladies, it doesn't necessarily seem like, ooh, I should join that group. If you feel like I'm going to be the outsider, and I think that it would be really helpful to reach out to parents of color and let them be involved in whatever way feels comfortable to them. It might be that like, I can't come on Thursday nights, but I'd love to email you my thoughts or, you know, be involved via a phone call, or maybe I could be on the such-and-such committee that I don't. that I don't, you know, I mean, offering them options of how they would like to be involved.
I agree because, you know, I'm on the PTO and I don't have those special relationships necessarily with, you know, parents of color. So, and you as, you know, the principal of their child would have a better relationship than I would. And maybe taking them in science and saying, you know, would you be interested exactly how Robin just explained it would be, I think, helpful.
Yes.
I think it's okay to be explicit as well. Like, we recognize that we have a lack in our school community and we have, you know, what did you say, 25% kids in the Brattleboro Town Schools who are not white? That's a huge lack. And I know the families are, it's not like they're oblivious to that. So being explicit about, you know, what we see as a need in our school community and that this is, we'd like them to be empowered to have more of a leadership role in creating the school community.
Motion, then?
Well, I move that we ask Robin to look into models and costs for teacher training. And I look, talk with Peter Elwell about the training for the board and potentially administrators as well. I have no idea what, you know, if you folks have done it all, then maybe not, but for all, it's going to be the same thing. And the third is that the principals talk to. Reach out, thank you. Reach out to the parents of color to see if they participate more actively in the PTOs with the, I think you basically described in the framework of effort and putting it in a really positive light for people. We need you, you know, we recognize we need you, so would you please come? So that's not all of the motion.
Kim is seconding it. Any discussion, Spoon? I'm looking to you because you were specific about wanting to have measurable things.
That can come later.
Well, no, while we're looking at it, are those measurable?
Look into, I can definitely come back with some numbers and models to.
David, your second one is definitely yes or no. And then the third one will measure by seeing if anybody reaches out.
I don't think we need to make, I mean, if the principals reach out.
That's it.
They might not be successful, but at least let's try that.
The reaching out is the measurable.
Well, I think we, you reach out this first time and don't work, doesn't work, but you continue to reach out and eventually, you know, people will see, oh, they really are interested in what I'm thinking, what I'm thinking and what I'm, what I can bring to the table. And hopefully then, once we can get one person, then two people and three people, it would continue to grow.
So all in favor?
Aye.
It was an unanimous vote.
Kelly is.
Thank you, Kelly. Oh, we have somebody coming?
Kelsey, Kelsey's going to be doing.
Oh, see, this is what we do. I like this.
Passing the torch.
Okay, so I think that we'll conclude the diversity section.
And who, I'm sorry, who is going to be, is that a Lyle thing to schedule the training for the board?
Which training?
When you tell me, when I find out people, then I will get dates from them and bring them to you, like I've done for the gender-affirming communities.
I think Ariel had one last comment. Would you still want it?
Yeah, just briefly, very quickly. For a feedback measure, one of the things that really matters is that for reaching out to parents, it's why are they not getting involved? Marginalized communities don't get involved for a lot of different reasons when it comes to schools. So we need to reach, so some of the reach out is communication with these parents and asking, you know, what areas they are comfortable in, how would they be comfortable interacting in the school community? Why don't they interact in the school community? And it may be that they're not, they weren't formally educated, they don't, if they're ELLs, they don't understand our system. My gosh, there's so much to navigate. But there's a lot of different reasons. And they're our client, along with our students. So another measure for, when we get into the diversity work, you have to, we have to talk to the kids. We have to survey the kids. We have to get the feedback from the kids because they're our clients. We're in the customer service industry. That's what we do as educators. And, and so it's getting that, that communication loop going. So it's like, are we serving you? How are we serving you? And how are we not serving you? And how can we serve you better? And start getting them to have a voice inside of this, so it's not us or you all or whomever sitting around making decisions and saying, oh, this is measurable, this is good feedback, this just shows success, when they may still be feeling like, no, there's been no change. You know, and the kid comes home and goes, oh, yeah, these are the comments I got today. Because the kid's biracial or black or whatever, Hispanic, you know, it's like, we have to be asking the clients directly. And I just wanted to add that because that is something that is, that in a lot of our schools in the Northeast is a missing, or in our, in our, sort of our, our system of public schools in this country, actually. It's forgetting to go back to the clients on a regular basis so that they have say and that we work to their needs and we service them. Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good discussion.
Thanks to everybody who came, for your thoughts.
All right, so I think. Yeah, well, I'm going to miss it right now, so.
Noteworthy accomplishments.
Is there, is there anything that we need to vote on?
Yes, I'm going to start with Deb, noteworthy accomplishments. And if you could also put your actual needed.
Well, the noteworthy accomplishment is that we adopted the month of September with no under-enrollment.
No under-enrollment?
One month.
Yes.
However, what I'm about to talk to you about is potentially another enrollment issue. So I'll pass this around. And as it's coming around, I will talk to you about our problem in Westminster specifically, although it's, it is a programmatic problem and we're talking about understaffing. Overall, we currently have 11 teacher vacancies in 10 classrooms and seven of those.
You have to speak up then.
Seven of those 10 vacancies have been big since the beginning of the school year. We've been plugging in with substitutes. In Westminster, in our two early, in our two Head Start classrooms of 13 children each, we're total of 26. We are staffed currently in one classroom with one bachelor degree teacher, and then we use two subs. And in the other classroom, we have two bachelor degree teachers with one sub. Our, in all of our classrooms, we, we staff them with three teaching positions. We operate from 7:30 to 4:30. Substitutes are a mixed bag. And in that particular site, in that, in our two Head Start classrooms, we currently have 36% of our students are on IEPs or, and/or have a behavior support plan. And the school district there is also facing understaffing issues and so are support that comes from the school system for those children with IEPs. In many cases, it's non-existent. And so there's a lot of burden put on our teachers to provide the intensive support that would typically come from the school district. We have been operating with three substitutes and recently that has become very sporadic. And, and you know where this is going. Things are pretty serious in the classroom. We've had to close early three times in the last week because of staffing, understaffing issues. And we can't, it's just ticking a time bomb. We're, we can't continue. We're burning out the teachers. We're worried that there will be some child safety concern. There hasn't been anything yet, but this is just a situation ripe for that. And, and there is no time for those teachers to do their administrative duties. And that includes things like doing child assessments, having parent meetings, going to team meetings around the needs of the children, any kind of trainings that we're providing. And so I, the management team has put together a temporary proposal that I discussed with our regional office staff yesterday. And I'm presenting it to you now and then it will go to policy council hopefully next week. It's a little putting the cart before the horse, but time is of the essence. So I wanted to take advantage of this opportunity. So the proposal is that we go into double sessions. Double sessions are a perfectly integrated prototype in the Head Start world, but nonetheless, they still exist. And I actually have directed, did direct a program in the past where we did have double sessions. Basically, that means a morning session with one group of children and an afternoon session with the other group of children. And in this way, we would not be turning any child away who's currently enrolled in the program. It means that they would have a reduced program day. We would combine the three teachers so they would teach both sessions. We would be fortified in that way. We may still use subs for, you know, release time, release time. The double session model also operates four days a week so that the fifth work day is the time that the teachers have to do their administrative tasks. We would pay the teachers a differential for doing that because we're basically doubling up on their charges and continue to try and recruit so that we can go back to the two-classroom model. We are really struggling particularly in Westminster to find qualified candidates. That's a community where we just have less interest and less resources. So I'm asking your support of that proposal.
So Deb, have you, you said particularly from Northeast, Wyndham Northeast is not available to provide the support that's needed?
Yes.
Is there any way Wyndham Southeast could work into this and provide the support that's needed?
What it means basically is special education teachers being in the classroom with children, I don't think.
So we don't have any extra classroom teachers either?
I will say, I don't think that, the parents are aware of this and we did, I did talk about this at our policy council meeting last month. It certainly does not meet their needs because they are, you know, we're running a full-day program and we're actually doing a tally right now about how many of our parents are working and really use us for childcare in addition to the educational part of the day. But so it would reduce that, but the parents are aware and they're being very cooperative when we're having to close early. They see the situation and they're willingly coming to take their children home earlier. And hopefully this is temporary.
But it could lead to children being pulled out and put elsewhere because the parents didn't have.
It could.
And then will be under-enrolled.
Or will be under-enrolled. There was a program, a Head Start program, in very last year that kept the classroom closed the entire year because they couldn't find the teachers.
And the teachers that you're looking for need what sort of qualifications?
So we are, the three that we have are actually meeting and exceeding what we need as a minimum. So the teachers that we would, the minimum requirements, we would look for the vacant positions in this scenario would be anywhere from a teacher with an associate's degree to a teacher who has a course in child development and/or a course in the principles of childhood education or something like that. And then we would, and we do have those positions in place. We would, you know, as hired, as help in continuing our education.
So you're proposing it would be like a morning nursery school class and then an afternoon class?
It would be a morning Head Start class, which is a completely different from nursery school, and then an afternoon Head Start class. So right now, we have two Head Start classrooms. One is primarily enrolled with three-year-olds and others who are four-year-olds. And they run all day. So we would try and move the three-year-olds to the morning session and then, and we would give them breakfast and lunch. And then when they, and then when they're, when they leave and the afternoon group comes in, those children would start with lunch and then stay with us for three and a half hours. And they would be the older, the four-year-olds.
And have you gotten feedback from the parents that they, whether they would be able to bring their kids to that?
That's, there are steps involved and you're the first stop.
Right, okay. I'm just wondering if the, you know, if everyone approves this change and then the parents are all like, we can't come in the afternoon, what would happen then?
Well, there are many scenarios that this poses and many challenges. And I will say that we can try and accommodate as much as possible, perhaps. I mean, these are children with high needs. And so we could say you can come in the morning if you want to, if there's, if there's a child that moves out of the morning session. And that may work with a child that may, we would really have to look at each individual case, but we are, the overshadowing concern is our under-enrollment situation that we're currently being scrutinized for. So we're going to do everything we can not to lose any child, but.
Even if that means making like two mixed-age classes instead of threes and fours?
Yeah, we would, we would consider that because the teachers, these are the same teachers if they have. So it would, but we can't say to a parent, you can have a morning and an afternoon slot with one child. We can't discount.
And this is probably a stupid question, but we do the partnerships with different schools in the Brattleboro area. Are there partnerships up there as well?
So we, there are not. And we explore, we looked at many options and this was, we looked at, we came up with three options and this was the best of the three. The partnerships that are, there are some potential partnership opportunities in that community, but those programs are fully enrolled at this point. One program runs 10 hours a week. If, to cultivate that, like as we did here, takes time, a good year of planning ahead of time and.
They have to be certified and meet different levels.
Right, and we, and we do have it. Now, what this does do is that it potentially, right now, our classrooms are financed with Head Start Act 166 and state subsidy dollars. This is, this, this removes the Act 166 eligibility and the state subsidy eligibility temporarily. So we would be financing this exclusively with Head Start money, which we can do. We run the witness test on that. And perhaps the funding sources would say, we're not going to pull that fund, those funds so quickly because we really are aiming to get those classrooms enrolled, staffed again to go back to that model. So we did look at the other option. So we looked at the partnerships and realized that that's something we can continue to look at in the future, but it's not realistic to think that we could do it overnight. It takes time. The other was to offer a home-based program, which means all of these families, we need to find other childcare programming. And our home-based services would be after hours. And we didn't think that would be very realistic for us and stuff.
Because Westminster continues to be the most active parent group and very enthusiastic about this, right?
Absolutely.
By far.
And, I mean, I did, I did talk about this. And yes, our policy council is considerably comprised of Westminster parents right now. And they, when I, I didn't, you know, I was just talking to them a month ago about this issue and that, that we were worried. And it's, it's come to a critical point. And that I warned them that it may happen, this critical point may occur, didn't get into what we would do next. But they were in total agreement with everything that I was sharing and saying, yes, we are concerned. And then even after the meeting, stayed to talk to me about more concerns because of this situation.
And so if we're under-staffed in Brattleboro, we can't move any staff up? I mean, we have vacancies down here though, too.
We have vacancies down, in almost every one of our classrooms, we have at least a vacancy. We have more that are vacant than our, like two that are fully staffed. And so we, and we really can't move. Because those relationships are so critical with the children, we are really trying to, as best as we can, have primary caregiving, you know, have those, those primary caregivers there. And, and so. And, and so, if we pull from here, we're creating a problem here to go and address that one.
Do we have, you're fully enrolled down in Brattleboro, right? So we couldn't move some of the kids down? If, if parents were able to, for the full, you know, to take advantage of the full day?
That's true. Can we move the kids to Brattleboro?
The parents would have to transport.
I, and I get that, but...
We don't have the bus anymore, in Westminster?
No, 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 that was, and that's a long ride for kids to be on the bus, that, that age. But, I mean, that's, would that be an option for parents if they could get their children there, and then at least it's...
If they wanted to have the full day and they're willing to drive that far as they're supposed to?
So, so we are fully enrolled in all of our classes.
The one type that we are.
Okay, that's, that's a good idea.
It's not ideal, but it meets the alternative.
All right, so does someone like to make a motion to this one?
I would move to approve the change to the, to the double sessions.
Second, please. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm just, I won't take our time, but I did talk to you about our, the new monitoring system, and that we had a preliminary letter. And we received a follow-up letter that's, I will distribute it to Jill, but hopefully you got this, to say, "Oh yes, they're coming at some point this year," which of course, I wish they weren't coming now, but, because one of the things they're going to be looking at is their classroom assessment scores, which is all about relationships they're seeing in classrooms. And focus area too, which is really looking to see that our data we collect from our assessment matches our strategic plan, and that we're actually achieving the outcomes that are cashed for our strategic plan. It just doesn't give us any days, it does say that we'll give a 60-day notice. And I did tell you that I will be, I'm scheduled to give you a little tutorial about it. There are some references in this letter, if you want to go ahead and take a look at the protocols there, available on that cited website.
So 60 days' notice, and we haven't received notice?
Right.
Means we're not till the beginning of the year?
Right, well, hopefully, because they did ask me for an availability calendar back in September, early September, and I blocked out a lot of the fall dates, so I'm hoping that they'll come in the spring.
So maybe we'll be calling. Okay, I want to go to any other action needed. I'm sorry, to the administrators, but I feel like it's five to seven, so I want to take any action needed. I've got a preschool partnership contract, is that the person you want to do? So you want to talk about this real quickly?
So these are the preschool providers that are, that have Brattleboro, that have Brattleboro students. It's the same thing that we've done in years past. Brattleboro Center, Early Education Services, Garland, the Grammar School, Hilltop, Little Red House, Meeting House, Mulberry Bush Neighborhood, Timson Hill, where is that one? Vernon, Vernon, thank you. Westby, Winston Proudy, Horizon, and Kids in the Country. So these are all preschool programs where we are sending students. And this will just pay for, the money flows through us, and it just pays for their 10 hours a week.
So, this is a dumb question, maybe. Some of these kids don't live in our Brattleboro Town School District, but the money all flows through us?
Yeah, and these kids, these kids will be the kids that are living in Brattleboro. Because Putney goes through the same thing, but the kids that are living in Putney, they have a similar list, so they may not be going to a preschool in Putney, but they're a Putney kid.
Well, would there be, while Jill's signing that, would there be any, any value to some of these partners coming to the, the January 3rd presentation on 166 and conversation about preschool?
Yeah, and I think usually when we have Janice, she's really good, yeah, reaching out to those people. So are you going to, a motion to approve that?
Yeah, do we have a motion to approve this?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Good, because I assumed and went, oh, it's very time.
But the other thing that I do need approval, and it's up to you. Academy School has been invited to participate in a program, there are 16 schools from Vermont, from throughout Vermont, to sample for lead in the fixtures and faucets. And the program is voluntary, it will inform the need and design for statewide testing program in the future. So they are requesting Academy's participation in this. We have to let them know by next week, which is why time is of the essence for this.
And it just came to me, well, actually, it was gone, so maybe it came to me earlier. Anybody want to make a motion that Academy should be included in this, there's no cost?
I would move to include Academy.
Second, please?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Just a quick question. What, what are they going to do with the findings if they find?
What they're going to do, if they find lead here, I hope they'll let us know. But what they're trying to do is just create a system that they'll use for all the schools. So they're picking schools from around the state to just sort of pilot what they're...
Hasn't this been pretty thoroughly examined for that? It seems like the floors and the roof and everything are torn apart at one time.
This is, this the one testing the water?
This is testing pipes and faucets.
Yeah, so old copper pipes with lead solder.
Right, I got it.
So, but no, your answer, your question is not in, not to my knowledge in the years I've been here, no.
No, it's more, I was thinking with insulation and then in time.
Correct, asbestos and that kind of went up and away.
So all in favor of this?
Aye.
And the opposed? So we're moving on with that as well. What about the Sprattleboro Town Traffic Safety Committee?
Okay, so Peter Elwell contacted me in the past. Brattleboro Town School Board has appointed a person to be on the Brattleboro Town Traffic Safety Committee. Betsy Gentile's done it for the last few years, she's now retired. Alice Sharks is interested, she sent a letter of interest to Jill and myself. And she's asking to be appointed to that town committee. She's worked with Mark to make sure that Mark knows that she may need, I don't remember, one morning, a month...
Like a half an hour, half a month.
Yeah, something like that.
Any discussion?
Can't think of a better candidate.
Motion?
I can't either. I was going to say, I can't think of anybody, but I'd like to see more.
So Spoon is making a motion with that statement, right, Spoon?
Yes, I motion that we accept Alice Sharks as our representative.
Seconded by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, we're moving right along here. Other actions?
Gender-affirming communities, that was one of the things that you had asked me to look into in August. Kari Smith, who's done training for other schools, is able to do that for us. She would like a little bit clearer picture on what the goals would be. It could be the basics of gender diversity, it could be a variety of ways to become a more gender-inclusive school community, specific guidance on supporting transgender and gender nonconforming youth in the schools. But she would be available, I asked her about Wednesdays, first and third. December 6th and December 20th are her first two Wednesdays, at a fee of $150 for the session. I told her, "We meet for two hours, but we would need probably a half hour to do normal minutes and that type of thing." But other than that, I would think that we'd have 60 to 90 minutes for the training.
So, that might be a good time to look at our work schedule that I also have here opened up. Our October 4th meeting, that kind of changed, I wasn't here, but I don't think you all met, right?
We met for about five minutes.
For five minutes, so the...
Yeah, just through the morning.
So the WSESU meeting, shortened meeting, I believe that happened.
Yes.
But student academic performance data review did not happen?
No.
And I believe David had an idea on that, or Lyle, one of you two?
I have definitely a, a idea.
Let's hear your idea, Lyle.
So, I know that Mark has been doing a lot of work at Green Street School. It's been a while since we've been able to tour the school. He's been doing some work with some teacher leaders, looking at their data. And I would like to propose that our next meeting that we focus only on Green Street data. Usually, we have a big data presentation, all the schools. I think this would be a way to make it a little more manageable for us, and a chance for Mark to give us a tour of the school and show us the improvements that have happened over the last few years. I don't remember the last time we took a tour of, of Green Street School, so I don't know, Mark, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, that'd be great, I think we just want an opportunity to kind of tell, tell the story of our progress over the last three, plus years.
Would that be the whole agenda, the, the whole agenda?
Is there something on the chart already?
No, we didn't have that as of today, so we have it.
Oh, what did you ever talk about?
October 20th, next week, next month.
Yes, yes, so, what's on for the 25th should be the Brattleboro School Endowment. I know it was planning on coming to talk. And then this particular form that was updated at the, does not have all your scratchouts, and you may be more updated than this form that Barb sent to me. So what do you have on yours, the 25th?
Well, we didn't have it on October 25th. So what I had, what I wrote down was based on the minutes from the last meeting, for next agenda items, data review, 10:25. Aspect scores, academic interventions, students on grade level, all of that, but, and then Mark, the opportunity to present the three-year story of Green Street. So that, it's, you know, pretty much that. It would just be, just Green Street, and that's all that, we didn't have anything else on the 25th.
Okay.
Because we didn't have a 25th, unless something... The endowment, yeah, the endowment report, I have an arrow saying, this is, and I real apologize, it just, I was completely confused about what's, what's happening next, but I've got an arrow down that says endowment reports on October 25th. And that's consistent with what you were, yeah, I'm agreeing.
So, if we do that, then I think we're good. We would be Brattleboro School Endowment and Green Street's student data, performance data, and Green Street in general, it's Green Street night. So we would make it at Green Street?
Great.
And do it there? Now, I assume that we'd probably want to hear about Oak Grove and Academy, or are we just going to blow them off?
I would suspect that we'd want to do it at another time, so they have time to prepare. I know Mark's been thinking about this for a while, but there'd be a night where we would do an Oak Grove night, or a night we'd do an Academy night, and it makes it a little more targeted, so that we can hear about each individual school, and it's not just one great thing.
So October 18th... Was also supposed to do budget overview and universal meals. I know we passed out the budget at the last meeting. And also on here is gender-affirming communities presentation, question mark. So, I'm going to take that.
So I have, I have an arrow going from budget overview, including universal meals, to November 1st, which is a shortened meeting.
Which I think I have written down.
Is that consistent too?
And that, so our meeting is five to six on the 1st. And I think we said that was going to happen at Academy?
Yeah, because we want the, the extra one for our information.
But didn't we talk about maybe doing five to 6:30, and then the Act 46 from 6:30 to 8?
Yes, but I was told that can't happen.
Okay, I don't know.
I asked for that, and I believe I was told it can't happen.
Is that the shortened meeting, because it's the Act 46 informational?
Yeah, because of the vote. Because I think it had already been announced.
What if we did the Brattleboro Town School Board from 4:30 to 6? Just to give...
Is that possible for anybody?
I can.
Spoon, can you?
I can come at 4:30, yeah.
What day was that?
November 1st.
Yep, I think I can do that.
All right.
I probably will not, but you have everybody else.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a regular...
Yeah, I think I can do it, I would have, yeah.
So tonight was supposed to be gender-affirming communities, I don't think that was really what we did.
Well, that was because the trainer couldn't come.
Yes, the trainer couldn't help.
So I'm going to say what tonight really was diversity.
And that the, the gender-affirming one will end up being December 20th.
Six or 20, whichever you decide, yeah.
Should we make a decision on that now, so we can book her?
I think you do the 6th. Let's try for the 6th, because it may be a blizzard. And then you're ready. So the 20th actually is currently wide open, and I might recommend we leave that, although we could do Academy or Oak Grove, one of those nights, just.
What's the date we're bringing the interns?
They have the 6th.
The interns are on the 6th.
See, that's on December?
That's what I have in pencil there.
Does that happen the same time as gender equity training?
No, if we're going to have 90 minutes of training, probably not. Can we do it on the, what's the, what's the 15th?
November 15th, right now, says budget sessions, curriculum overview, Eureka, E-C-R-I, et cetera.
So would you prefer...
And then there's, then I wrote in, EES-aligned monitoring system.
I think that was something you needed to do, right, Deb, on 15th?
Well, that's the training that I was talking about earlier, but if you want to go ahead and check that link yourself, it's a pre, pre-program consideration.
So self, we could self...
Yeah, we can self-train.
Yes.
And that counts.
That might be easier.
That would be good. Let's go for self-training.
If you have any trouble with it, just let me know.
All right, so we'll cross that off of yours, then Dave. Kelly, make sure we put that in the minutes, that that's...
Definitely just send us all, send us all an email with a lead.
Yeah, it's on this.
Oh, it's on this, okay.
We're going to, the board will be training ourselves on the monitoring reviews for fiscal year. Before the 15th of November.
Why, there won't be enough time for the Academy Antioch program and gender-affirming communities? Should we move to the 20th?
Well, what if we do Academy Antioch program on the 20th and do the Academy overview? So it's all Academy night on the 20th?
December 20th?
But I don't know, has Dandy already set up with the interns?
I did, I mean, I could say it, they could change. We're trying to bring the interns and the cooperating teachers at the same time.
The 20th might be late, because they're probably on vacation, if they're college students.
So they all Academy night.
They're employees, they're our employees too.
Okay.
So leave it. Which do you want, the 6th or the 20th, and the other one's going to go to gender?
I have not confirmed with the trainers, so I can confirm with the 20th, if you, if it's easier to keep the...
I could be flexible, the thing is that the 6th is a date that I've given them, and...
So then let's leave it there.
The proper teachers and the interns and Deb Cardine.
So gender-affirming communities now moves to the 20th, I'm doing this, guys, so we will give it a critical... And the Academy Antioch program is going to go to the 6th, and then Academy overview in general.
On the 6th.
Yep.
Can you tell me on the 20th, where that meeting's going to be held?
What did you say?
December 20th, is that what school is at?
Where are we going to be? That's a good question. Academy is obviously...
The 6th.
The 6th. Where do we want to go on the 15th? We should have been...
The 20th.
The 15th of November.
Yeah.
Oh.
Should have been Green Street, right?
Yeah, we were going to finish Oak Grove on, tonight was going to be the last day of Oak Grove, so it would be Green Street.
All right. So the 20th for gender-affirming communities, we're at Academy still? And then maybe by the... January 3rd has opinions for the annual report presentation on one Act 41, 166. Pre-K contracts, collaboration with the school pre-K, long-term outlook for pre-K. What if we do January 3rd over at Oak Grove and get you guys that night? As long as we're talking about pre-K?
Yep.
Be good to be able to tour?
Yep.
Okay. And then, that 17th is open, and I think we should leave that, to catch up in case. I'll send it to everybody.
So we're going to try for the, the gender training on the 20th?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And that's all specifically for the 20th right now?
Yes, and I think it'll be, it'll be a full 90 minutes, so, and I'm sure it could go even longer if we finish our...
So where are we November 1st?
Here, because that's the informational meeting.
Oh, okay. And then November 15th?
I've got it written down, it's coming to you.
Jill's going to email it, too.
Email, I'm ready.
So, yeah, well, it's not the next one. Okay, so, yeah, well, it's not the next week, so...
Yeah.
It's always good to know where one is going.
Yes. Especially seeing you told Andy today that you were going to be, he said that you mentioned Academy.
Oh, no, I don't know. Did I say Academy at one point? I don't know. My brain might have slipped. I knew I was going to soccer games on either side, which now didn't even happen.
And maybe that January 17th one could be suggested for the trainers that you're contacting about the implicit bias.
Sure. I thought that, I thought you were...
I'd push it for the...
Let's you and me talk to make sure I'm clear about what you want.
But I would push it. I wouldn't do January 17th because I think we're tight on a lot of this stuff and we're going to...
We have a lot of budget.
Budget also got snow stuff that could happen. So I would push that just a little bit further out.
But you and I, maybe we could carve out a little time at the next first meeting or just a little bit before that?
Okay.
And we can share notes.
So on, under new business, goal around creating more diverse workforce. I think we've kind of discussed, we didn't come up with a goal specifically. The curriculum for implicit, curriculum implicit bias discussion, I think we've handled. Gender-affirming community training for the board is not really tabled. It's been handled tonight.
Great.
Unfinished business that was on here was Act 46. I don't know that there's really any updating, except that there's a meeting on Monday and Robin's going to come. David could come, but probably couldn't and Spoon could not. So Robin will be there. And then that leads us to noteworthy accomplishments that we skipped, all of you on this side of the room. We're already late. Do you have anything we should really know?
I can just share my report.
Send it around?
Yes, my report.
Was there any action?
We're meeting next Wednesday, so they could always, we could always, you can talk about it.
Next Wednesday's our bonus meeting of the month since we took away an early one. Anything that you needed action on? Nothing, right?
No action, but just wanted to report that this past Saturday, our playground building, day volunteer day, we got a lot...
Did you get rocks?
Got a lot done. Well, we still need rocks, but I did run into a problem of how the heck we get them here. So, but we, we've got a lot done. I won't take up any time because it's late, but just to let you know, we, it's, there's quite a few things out there now. So it's some board meeting that's scheduled here. We'd love to take the outside, play in the mud kitchen.
In December, maybe here.
Frozen, but...
All right.
I'll pick up on that balance meeting.
So I need next agenda items.
So that's Green Street data, Green Street tour.
Right. Is there anything else?
Endowment.
The next agenda items, I've just got down to the endowment report. And the financial stuff, isn't that happening that time?
Where?
When, the budget?
Yeah.
That's November 1st. Budget overview, universal meals.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so anything else that anybody wanted for the next agenda besides endowment and Green Street information? Otherwise, I'll take my motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're done.